I'll call to order the regular meeting in the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, July 25th, 2017, and we will start with roll call.
Tom Knoll.
Here.
Catherine Westerby, here. Barbara Doss.
Here.
Don Francis.
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
So, we have a special presentation this evening, this ceremonial swearing-in of a new police officer, Kyle Crook.
Good evening. It's my extreme pleasure to introduce Officer Kyle Crook. He's destined to take a lot of grief about his last name as a police officer. Kind of an aside, Kyle's not the youngest officer that we've ever hired, but he makes me feel the oldest because I graduated from high school with his dad. So, that really hit me at a whole nother level here, so... But Kyle's originally from Dodgeville, so we're getting a good influence there, Eileen. But Eileen's also from Dodgeville originally. But he's a product of the Marines, Southwest Tech, and we're thrilled to have him come aboard.
All right. Kyle, we'll have you walk over here, we'll get you swan in.
Alex, it's not your name?
Hi, Kyle Crook.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
Swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially...
And will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
For the best of my ability.
So, thank you.
The lake is yours.
First off, I just want to say, thank you. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to work for the city of Platteville. Going through school, the department was on my radar, but it wasn't something I thought that maybe I could attain. And when the opportunity presented itself, I jumped on it, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity, and I just wanted to say, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to your family. All right. The next item is a public hearing that has actually been withdrawn by the applicant. Joe, you just want to touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, just in case anybody saw the public hearing notice which was published before we had the withdrawal request, it was a property at 685 South Chestnut. They were looking to convert part of that structure to residential use, and the B3 zoning wouldn't work for that, so they're looking at B1 zoning, which allows a combination of commercial and residential. But the preliminary cost estimates they received to do the conversion work was much higher than anticipated, so they're kind of reevaluating their options, so they asked us to be withdrawn.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is consideration, the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you prefer a separate discussion in action. A is council minutes from the July 11th, 17 regular meeting. B is payment of bills. C is appointments to boards and commissions, and I have two this evening. For the commission on aging, Ellen Stelplug. The museum board, Mike Hahn. And we are still looking for volunteers to serve on the Board of Appeals ET zoning, an alternate, or Historic Preservation Commission alternate position, and also another commission on aging individual, as well as two people for the redevelopment authority board. D is licenses, temporary Class B retailers licensed to serve fermented malt beverages and wine. The Platteville Public Library Foundation for the donor appreciation event in the library on September 16th from 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM. And also in our packet, our one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. We have two permit requirements, or requests, parade permit for Dairy Days on Saturday, September 9th, starting at 9:30 AM, and a banner permit for the Platteville Dairy Days from August 20th to September 10th. And also in our packet is a resolution 1716, application for exemption from the levy of any county library tax. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Knoll?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. I have no requests this evening, but we do have a special presentation we would like to make.
I just wanted to say a few words tonight about our administration director, Valerie Martin, who's left the room.
Taking the picture.
Perhaps we can hold this until she returns.
We'll come back to that. Valerie is acting not only as director of administration this evening, but as our photographer, so...
All right. So, everyone...
All right. Soon as she comes back in, we'll go back to that. Also in our packet, reports, airport commission, Doss?
Nothing to add to the minutes, but a big thank you to the 430 to 450 people who participated in this year's flying in breakfast. I would also say that there were 50 airplanes that landed at our airport and took off again on Saturday, on their way likely to EAA. And we actually also had a celebrity in town, Dick Ratan, who flew his plane around the world several years ago in the 80s, spent the night in Platteville, and had his little, I don't know, I said it kind of looks like a kayak that flies. It's like, it's the smallest little plane I've ever seen. So, yeah.
The beautiful...
It was a great, a great weekend at the airport.
It really was, and I will say that I was there and I talked to one pilot who came from Texas, and they had also spent the night, and he said, "People in Platteville are so friendly." He just had a great time, so I thought that was really nice. All right. I'm going to go through the reports and then we'll come back. All right. Plan commission, Nichols or Knoll, I have nothing to add.
Nothing.
Library board, Nichols, just a reminder that there's a business after hours, starting at 5 o'clock tomorrow night at the library, sponsored by The Chamber, and Grand County Economic Development will be held also that night, so people will be coming from throughout Grant County and then attending the Grand County Economic Development meeting at, I think, 5:45 at Steve's Pizza. So, we'll have a lot of activity, and Jesse just tells me that they also have story over that night, and they also have a meeting, so it'll be a fun, fun time to be at the library. Housing authority board, Killian?
No additions.
Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Francis?
All the vacancies have been filled, and now we're slowly going through the master plan.
Great.
Because the last time I was touched was five years ago.
Good. Historic Preservation Commission, Killian?
No additions.
All right. Now, we'll go back to that special presentation.
All right. I'd like to ask Valerie Martin, our administration director, to come on up here. Normally, we don't do these types of presentations, except for retiring employees, but Valerie as a member of our leadership team, has made a tremendous impact in a very short time, and I think it's worthy of recognition. And I can only speak to, really, the last year that I've worked most closely with Valerie, but here's just a little list, a little sampling. We had, of course, the budget challenges that we faced last year, that required a tremendous amount of work in terms of forecasting, developing scenarios. Valerie took on, really, a huge task of making our budget document, one that would be compliant with the best practices for GFOA, and Government Finance Officers Association, and how she did that, on top of everything else that was going on, I still don't know. She was able to implement new revenue sources in terms of the wheel tax and ambulance fee. I think the folks at this tables, at these tables, you only see the debate, but behind the scenes, there's a tremendous amount of work that has to go into place for those to actually become effective. She worked on the long-range financial plan with our consultant team, also worked on the cash flow analysis with our consultants as well. She handled the voice-over IP implementation for the city. She transitioned to new dental and health plans. She handled the outsourcing of our flexible benefit and HRA benefit administration, and of course, you just saw the new financial policy last week. And I'm sure I'm missing a handful of things, even as we run down this list, but many people wouldn't accomplish that in five or 10 years, more or less one year. And so, I think Valerie's worthy of our recognition, and in honor of that, we have... These certificate of appreciation. And... It's smelling very fragrant down here. Thank you. And maybe, Eileen, if you were to come up, maybe we'll do a quick photo. Cool. Thank you. Hold this for me. Good. There you go. We'll step over to Karen's. Now, we have a new photographer. Yeah. Thank you. I'm very, I'm very unprepared for this because I didn't know this was going to happen. But I do want to just thank a couple people quickly. As Karen mentioned, we've been through a lot these past two years, so I want to thank her for just growing with me. I'm a super emotional person. Hey, you just... Okay. Growing with me and doing what's best for the city and the team. And the council. Excuse me. Thank you for always believing in your staff and for doing what you know is best for the city. I think that it's, it's a lot of work that people don't realize that goes, that really goes into being part of this council and all the meetings and everything behind the scenes, and sometimes the credit isn't given where it's needed, so thank you for doing that on behalf of your community. And my fellow employees and department heads. Why this is so hard for me is because I like my job, and I like my employees, and I like my peers, and, you know, they say you spend more time with your work family than you do your home family sometimes, and that's what these employees have become to me, is family. So, I will be super sad to leave them, but I'm super excited to spend more time with my family at home, so it's bittersweet, but thank you, and I'm mad at you, Karen, for putting me in this situation right now, unprepared. I feel if I was more prepared, I won't be a mess right now, but thank you to everyone and for all the support. You've been wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Valerie, you just want to tell folks what you are going to be doing?
Sure. I am actually going to be a high school teacher, so I'm going to be teaching accounting and personal finance and intro to business, so shaping the youth to hopefully some future possible City of Platteville employees, so...
Thank you. All right. We'll go on to the action items. The first is a property sale and development agreement for the Elm Street lots. Joe?
Okay. This is regarding the, which, it was two lots adjacent to the EMS garage and the water tower property. That has since been combined into one parcel, but it's the vacant land that the city no longer needs to go with that property. We do have a developer that has submitted a proposal that has been accepted. Dan Wadek would be the developer of that property. He's interested in purchasing the property for $30,000. His proposal is to construct a duplex on that lot, and there's information in the packet on his proposal. It'd be two bedroom units, two-car attached garage, all one level. He's built similar properties in the Keeler area, and he's got one that's not too much different in Platteville over on Ellen Street, I believe. So, this agreement would outline the terms of the development as far as what he's got to build and when he's going to get it completed. So, it's similar to a proposal or agreement that we used for the Columbock property sales. So, staff would recommend approval of the agreement, and our recommendation also is that any additional proceeds from the sale that are not needed to pay the townships, their portion of the EMS building would go towards a future housing study. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? And the EMS building is being used in what way at this point?
It's being used for storage for street division materials.
And Howard, you want to go in, in case people haven't heard this explanation, you want to go into a little bit why that building was retained?
Well, first off, it's being retained for cold storage, for those items that don't fit into our garage and other places. We are removing things from rented space in order to put it there. The other is that sometime in the future, 20, 25 years in the future, when it's time for the current water tower to be replaced, it will be easier and cheaper to put a brand-new water tower, basically where the building sits right now, while keeping the other one in service, and then switching over and dismantling the other tower. I've been told from the people who were here the last time, back in the mid to late 50s, that's exactly what happened before. There was, there was a water tower where the building sits, and they did exactly the reverse, so I think it'll work out very well for Platteville now and into the future.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
I make a motion, we approve the development agreement, and that, along with that, any proceeds from the sale that aren't allocated to the townships for reimbursement are allocated toward a future housing study.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Knoll?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is a residency waiver request for Officer Kyle Crook.
His name comes up twice tonight. Kyle is currently a resident of Darlington in a home that he purchased last spring or summer, and he would like to remain in that home. It is approximately about a mile and seven tenths outside our current residency requirement of 15 miles, and he would like to have a waiver of the residency requirement.
Questions, anyone? Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we waive the residency requirement for our newly-installed Officer Crook.
A second?
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Knoll?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Information and discussion items next, the former Pioneer Ford project update.
Okay. At the previous meeting, actually, June 29th, we had a meeting with General Capital. Sig is here this evening as well, where it was discussed that they would be interested in taking another look at the former Gates Hotel property to see if they would like to reconsider their options as far as keeping that building at its current location, restoring it, and using it as part of their development. So, they have done a further analysis of that building as far as determining their desire to do so. This was kind of the first step outlined in the memorandum of agreement, which the council has approved, regarding the steps that we would take to, you know, investigate the options on that site and try to reduce any negative impact on that structure. So, there is, you did receive a memo from General Capital regarding their response and their investigation. I don't know if you want me to summarize that, but Sig is here, Sig wants to summarize his memo.
Yep. I think if you want to come up, and that way you're available for questions. If you don't have anything to add, Joe. And just for our purpose, introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Sig Strout-Mannas. I'm with General Capital, and we are the developers of the Pioneer Ford redevelopment. So, and we're in front of you in late June. I, you know, very sincerely wanted to turn over every stone as it relates to the redevelopment of this hotel, and I felt that the only fair thing to do would be actually to really crunch the numbers, to have our construction people take a second look, and then to analyze it through the lens of a typical real estate development transaction. And what we did is we used what I would call traditional bank underwriting standards that we're seeing out in the market today. We used what I would consider conservative construction estimates. They're produced in-house. I did not have subcontractors crawl around the property, but what I asked my construction manager to do is use rules of thumb, and if anything, errator the conservative, so he wouldn't get in trouble. And then when I put that all together, as the memo suggests, and we have a bunch of spreadsheets backing this up, but basically, we looked at hard costs and soft costs that were something over $150,000 a unit, so $612,000 total. My assumption was renovating this into four units, which is the original thought we had. After crawling around in the building a little more, I think that four units make sense. We were thinking about two-bedroom units. I also used the market study that we had done professionally, third-party, to look at what rents could be and should be on a per-square-foot basis. So, we put that all in the hopper and mix it up. And what comes out on the other end is that, under a traditional bank underwriting scenario, we could borrow about $300,000, and that's based on loan-to-value ratios, things like that. That leaves a gap of $312,000, under my analysis. There are a couple of ways that developers look at this. One would be that they would cover it with cash equity. In other words, the bank loans you X dollars, you come up with the rest. Fair enough. Now, if I take $312,000 and I look at what people would expect to make in return, in other words, people invest money in the stock market, they invest money in real estate, there's some investment-backed expectations. In this case, those range anywhere from, on a cash-on-cash return, you know, 6% on the low end, that's unlevered, to 12% is more on pure equity. So, when I, when I look at those numbers and I look at an honest-to-goodness analysis of this thing, and you crunch through it, we believe that, based on today's underwriting standards and what we think that this market can bear, that it is simply infeasible. And this may be a gut-level instinct that I had the first time we walked through it, and I looked at the level of investment that it would require to bring this back. And the second time around, I did it not just from a construction perspective, but I really wanted to understand the financial side, like what would it really take? And so, that analysis basically had, in both scenarios, if we look at it from a developer's perspective, and this is in the memo, from a developer's perspective, whoops. And I don't know, Karen, did we see the summary? Was this distributed to? If you look at this, just at the summary, this is probably the best way to look at the hard numbers. After you pay the bank and you pay everybody else, there ends up being what we call cash flow. We think there's potential revenue of close to $50,000. There's about a 40% expense load, which is very typical, about, you know, 37% to 42% is what we're seeing, with a net operating income of about $30,000, so 29 to 25. When I use that leverage, the bank loan of $300,000 at the interest rate today, it's about $20,000, $19,326, and then we add reserves to that, which you need to make sure that in the future, if the roof, something happens, you've got to have a little money in the bank. So, altogether, that ends up with free cash flow, we call it, about $8,700 a year. So, now, we have to figure out if it's worth doing and investing $300,000 to get $8,700 a year back. And the scary thing about that is that if you have vacancy that's above market, if something goes wrong and you need a bigger, I'll call it a capital expense or anything like that, these small projects are very difficult to make work as a result. When I have a 70-something unit deal, imagine just looking at the scale of it, it's easier to cover shortfalls, it's easier to cover expenses, when we need to deep-clean something or the windows need to be done, et cetera, et cetera. And so, these small deals are always challenging just because of their scale. I think this kind of, as I would suspect, but here are the numbers to show it, that this is, in fact, the case. So, the two ways that we looked at it is if, if the developer invested the $312,000 in the shortfall, realistically, we'd need closer to $40,000, not $8,700, to really make an investor satisfied, okay? So, that's a negative return on the investor's side. The other thought we had is, what if we use the same underwriting that the city looked at for the larger project, but I just applied it to this, to a smaller project, but actually covered the entire shortfall? Borrowed at the same rate, looked at all the same parameters. What they're, we end up with is that we'd need an additional, and this is the last part of that analysis, $22,000 to pay that, just like we are on the other project, to cover that shortfall, with, again, against $8,700 of free cash flow, it's also a net negative of about $14,000. Not as bad as when you look at a developer, because a developer's going to expect higher returns than the city would. So, all this kind of makes logical sense. But, so, our conclusion, and then I'll say this, that we did it sincerely, I mean, I wish that, we're developers. If there was a cash flow potential here, I would jump on it. We're looking at this as an addition to our project, not as a replacement of units, so if there was a net positive way to make it work, we would be all over it. So, that's kind of my summary, and I don't know if Karen, if there's any other questions or...
Questions, anyone?
Did you look at, did you look at a cap rate for the investment?
Yeah, we did, and there's a range, and I would say that I was pretty generous with about a seven and a half cap.
Okay.
I mean, right now, larger multifamily is trading in the, you know, we'll call it in the sixes in the business, so 6% cap rates. I think that unique properties tend to trade higher, you know, in the high sevens, low eights, so we use seven and a half. And that, and Tom, so the question relates to how you value it and what the bank is willing to loan against it, kind of an independent analysis. So, the capitalization rate, you know, we assume is 7.5%.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Is this coming back for vote on the first meeting in August? Anything on this, or just simply this is an update?
This was an update, but we're looking for council direction with respect to what the next step should be.
Well, General Capital does not want to develop it, so the next step is to send out requests for proposals for developers, which is stipulation B.
Should I?
So, I believe as, do you want to highlight, as stipulation B is written, the, if we want to potentially modify the development agreement, which is what would be required before, if a new developer were to be pursued, then yes, we would move to B, but if it's not the council's desire to modify the development agreement, then we would potentially move forward to C.
The Historic Preservation Commission sent forward to the various entities our recommendation on stipulation B, and I believe you received a copy of that letter, and Joe Carroll did also, and I believe there has not been a reply back to that letter. And that, basically, that letter is saying that the city and the developer will come to an agreement as far as how to separate out the Gates Hotel, and then invite developers to look at the Gates Hotel as far as restoration.
And perhaps, and perhaps it would be helpful to go through what would be required if we were to...
Sure. So, we have a development agreement, and this is actually, it may be easy, just convenient, I'll go through this, but the second page of the memo really, I think summarizes our position on this. And that is that we, I guess... And that is that we, I guess, in essence, we made a deal, which is a big part of this, that we relied on to go to WIDA and to represent to the parties that we're dealing with, including the equity that's going to invest $10 million something dollars, that the points that we scored to get the tax credits, everything else was all based on the development agreement. And so, the points are that, we have a development agreement that has $1,132,426 that was a land contribution, that we also got points for in our scoring. And of that, the hotel was $107,000. So, to do anything but keep that in the project, so to speak, would be, we would need to make up the $107,000. That's kind of point A. Point B, and I think this is an important one, that we were willing to be flexible with if it's financially feasible, but several plan commissioners were adamant and were very seriously looking at the parking scenario and traffic circulation as it related between Oak Street and, what is it, Water? And the necessity to have traffic flow through there and how important that was. In fact, a couple of commissioners voiced concern that they probably would not approve this project as modified if there weren't that traffic circulation and the parking right there. So that's kind of a plan, that's kind of a larger planning discussion that would need to happen. And then, the last couple of points are maybe somewhat related, but we also submitted a market study to WIDA, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, that we relied on the market study that we would then have to go back and modify, because they basically felt that we were pushing the rents, we're comfortable with it, but we're actually, you know, pushing up against the square-foot rents that are probably feasible, and that you need to really have the bells and whistles attached to those rents, including parking that's convenient nearby. So we'd have to work with our market study person to accept any modification. And the last thing, which I say is slightly related, is now we are very close to negotiating with the investors that will be buying our tax credits. We look to big banks, big national syndicators to actually make that investment, and they want to make sure that, A, we're compliant with everything we represented to WIDA, which is supercritical, or there could be huge risk, and, second, that the deal makes sense to them as it was represented to WIDA. So, all of those things in a bundle, what my proposition is that, and you don't have to take my word for it, I wanted to crunch the numbers, you could even have somebody else look at them, but I really don't believe that this redevelopment is feasible. And I believe that what will happen ultimately is that trying to do something here is going to get in the way of us being able to close our project, because, you know, if it's a 30-day thing, awesome. If we're talking about months and months, if we're talking about something that bleeds into Thanksgiving, we're going to be gearing up to close our project, and if this is still an unknown, we have plan commission coming up to re-approve something, WIDA approval's coming up. Quite honestly, I fear that this could put the larger project in jeopardy. And I wouldn't be saying that if I didn't believe it, because I think that, you know, we're trying to, I feel like we've been flexible, you know, trying to express flexibility and say, hey, look, let's turn over these stones. But I think we're getting very close to the zone where we need to move ahead, move forward. That's our position as a developer, and whatever other paths you want to, you know, create, of course, are certainly up to you.
Other comments or questions, a direction? I will note that in the memo from staff, there is a timeline also regarding this entire project and things like when building demolition bids are due, when proposals conceivably due for relocating former Gates Hotel building. We are, as a city, we have a grant, two grants, right, Joe?
Correct.
And we have a timeline that we have to adhere to in order to receive that money from that grant. And so, we are in a position, as the city, where, as Zig has said, we've made the initial contract. And I appreciate the fact that you have gone back and looked again, and, you know, gave us good information on what you found when you looked a second time. So, I will speak for myself that I would prefer to stay with the existing developer's agreement that we have. We have talked as a council about having people propose to relocate the Gates Hotel building. I'm still in favor of that, if someone wants to do that. But if that does not happen, then there are steps the city can take to document the hotel structure through photos and drawings and et cetera, and then the demolition and, the salvage would take place, and then the demolition. So, that would be my personal preference. I don't know, what do the council members feel this evening? But obviously, staff would like to know if there's other questions. Any comments, anyone?
I believe we've moved through the memorandum of agreement that we adopted at the July 25th meeting, fulfilling A and B, and the last sentence in the memorandum B letter says, if neither party agrees to modifying the development agreement, then the city proceeds to step C. And I think that is where we are. We're proceeding to step C, which the city will make the hotel building available to another developer entity or entity that would relocate the structure off the site. And I believe that's where we are. I mean, we have done A. I mean, it takes both parties to agree to modify the development agreement. I think we've heard from General Capital that they aren't. So I think we're at step C.
Second?
This is actually for information.
Oh, sorry.
And discussion this evening, so.
Well, I have a concern to the future developer, or the next developer, if that person steps forward, is how they're going to move it, because that's expensive. And it has to be done on a timely basis, according to this timeline, which means they have a lot of work ahead of them. And I'd like to find out in the next week or so, what's their plan, so we don't postpone this timeline.
We did just have one person ask to speak for information purposes only, so Gary Prohaska, if you want to come up and limit yourself a little bit to five minutes if you can.
Gary Prohaska, I live at 280 Division Street here in Plattville, lifelong resident, and I'm on the HPC Commission. I just wanted to bring to your attention, I have been in communication with both Washington and the state on general information, not specifically to the Gates Hotel, but to see how this Section 106 and MOA works. That MOA has to be followed by the steps, and by deciding not to negotiate does not bypass that step. So I just wanted to let you know, I don't want you to jeopardize this entire project because you don't want to negotiate, but in discussing it, I had mentioned the possibility of having an RFP with them. It wouldn't that allow the commission, not the commission, the city council to show that they're operating in good faith? And they said yes. And I said, would it be advisable also to request a minimum of $107,000 to be paid for that building? And that would definitely allow this process to proceed, and the developer would receive that $107,000 or more, depending on if it got to be a bidding war or whatever. But anyway, that would allow the process to follow through step B. If there was no developer that came forward, then it goes to C. But the steps have to be followed. And so, by deciding that you don't want to negotiate, or don't want to change anything, does not get you by that step. And that was the opinion that I received coming downshoot from both departments. Now, they are not active at all, because we were on step A. And so, there is no action being processed, but they're aware of the general process of an MOA and the procedure that's supposed to be followed. And I just want to bring that to your attention, that I don't want to see this project fail because of this building. But the same case, they do recognize the building as being historic, they wouldn't have required an MOA to be processed if it wasn't historic, and this is the process that's a federal law, 106. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that by proceeding back and voting does not get you by that process, that there is a procedure, and that's why I would like to see an RFP put into the paper to advertise, because it shows good faith that you're looking. It doesn't mean that that process is going to bear fruit. And the building may definitely go down, and nobody will move it. And that's fine, but the process has to be followed. And that's the only information I had for you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, either Joe or Brian, I assume that you've both been involved in this. I believe that we are following the process?
I think you're following the process. I think that what Mr. Prohaska said would be a modification of the MOA.
And Joe had conversations with the state and the federal level when we did the memorandum of agreement, and...
Yeah, I think Mr. Prohaska is correct, we have to follow the steps, but I believe we are going through the steps as outlined in the agreement. The one thing that the state Historic Preservation Officer has specifically said, and it's also in the Advisory Council for Historic Preservation, and their information is theirs, there's nothing in the federal regulations that dictates the outcome of this process. So it doesn't say we have to stop at A or stop at B. We have to go through the process, and whatever that process leads to is where we end up. And as long as we go through that process, we allow people to provide input, we give information, then we are following the process as outlined.
All right. Anybody else have any comments? I mean, I've said that I think we are following the process, I think we're doing exactly what we need to do in this situation.
My concern still is the timeline. Will we be having a problem with the timeline? Do you foresee that?
Well, right now, we're, well, the next item is the demolition bid, so we'll be proceeding with that by August 8th. I guess from a timeline, I feel we would need to know if we want to do something different than going to step C by August 8th, so we don't have to have any clear direction otherwise tonight, but obviously, if you want to do something different, we do have a tight timeline. We need to move quickly. So I'm anticipating August 8th will be the award of the demolition bids. By then, we'll know if we've received any proposals as far as moving the structure, so we would have some additional information at that night to, you know, possibly make some other decisions. So I guess from tonight, it's just, if you do want to do something other, as far as additional steps or other information, you need, you know, we need to know that now. If you're fine moving forward with this, we're currently moving, that's fine, we just need to know otherwise.
So are we saying we can move on to step C and ask for a request of proposals from other developers to move the Gates Hotel?
Well, we've already started that process. We started that step just because of a time constraint that we're under, so...
Okay. So we're already in process C?
Correct. So those proposals would be due Monday, July 31st. So, like I said, by the next council meeting, we will know if there's any interest in that step.
And if there is interest, then what's the process after that?
Then we would have to decide if we wanted to select that proposal and negotiate with that individual to do the process of transferring ownership and moving it.
No further questions.
Okay. Well, why don't we go on to B then, because that may also help with some clarification on where we're at. So B is the building demolition bids for the former current airport site, Joe?
So we did request proposals for the demolition of the buildings on that site, and the bids were due Friday, so the information wasn't initially in your packet, but we did send that out later. We did get four bids for that work, and it is broke down, if you look at the, kind of, the summary, the phase one and phase two would be, phase one is basically just the above-ground, the basic building structures, phase two is the slabs and foundations. So the base bid would be the combination of those two. And the base bid would just be for the former dry cleaner building on Water Street and the art show room building on Water Street. So that was the base bid. The alternate bid is the former Gates Hotel structure, since that decision hadn't been made yet. So depending on where we end up, it'll be, you know, the base bid or the alternate bid included. But either way, as proposed, rural excavating is the low bidder with the base bid, and they're also the low bidder of the alternate bid. So at this point, it appears alternate, that rural excavating would be the low contractor. Ports of Construction and Dakota Intertek are fairly close on the base bid, and they're a little bit higher on the alternate bid. First Capital Salvage did not complete all of the required information as part of their bid package, so I don't believe they would be a qualifying bidder at this point. But that's the information we've got. There's a breakdown of the costs in your, that I handed out this evening as well. So at this point, this is on for information, so we would be looking for an award at the next council meeting. And that's why it would be convenient, if nothing else, that by August 8th, when we award these, we would know if the alternate bid should be included or not. Any questions?
Is this coming back August 8th, I guess is the date?
Correct.
For demo, the demolition request.
The award for the demolition, correct.
Does anybody have any questions on the information about the bids? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next item for information, which is commercial building lease for a portion of City Hall, Friends of Our Gallery.
This was an item that we had discussed with the council during a work session. As part of the art gallery's transition, they were seeking to rent two rooms that are currently not being utilized in City Hall, had been part of the former Maker space. And so, the attached lease would be to rent those rooms to the Roundtree Gallery, and on a month-to-month lease at $75 a month.
Any questions, anyone?
What, getting the right copy. What I wondered about is the cost of insurance to them. Did they look into this?
Yep, they have looked at it, they've already arranged for insurance, and so the amount that's in the agreement is agreeable for them.
The cost to them? And they're not getting any budget anymore, are they? We took away their $15,000.
Correct. But they don't have a budget from the city.
Any other questions? And this is not the space that was renovated for the Neighborhood Health Partners, this is the old Maker space.
Correct. This is the other.
All right. That'll be on for next time. Public, public transportation rebid. Howard?
Yes. Staff has been discussing the issue with Wisconsin DOT. Normally, we would be discussing whether to extend our current contracts, but because of the fixed route bus system, we are required to have a paratransit plan. Those specifications and requirements were not in the previous request for proposal, and was noted in an audit conducted last year. DOT considers this a significant contract amendment, and is requiring the city to terminate the current taxi and bus contracts as of the end of this year, and go through the RFP process. Just so that everybody understands, paratransit is how a handicapped person gets... Just so that everybody understands, paratransit is how a handicapped person gets the equivalent service, uh, as the bus system if they cannot use that system. Because we have the taxi, um, there's going to be very little change for most, for the vast majority of people on how things operate, but we need to have the plan, we need to be able to track the ridership and, and the requests, uh, in accordance with this plan, and the new RFP will describe how the contractors will need to serve the customers and do those tracking, that tracking for us. So I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that, that we needed to go through this process, and, um, unless the council decides to give other direction, our, our staff intends to, uh, begin this process so that we can have the new, um, contracts effective at, uh, for January 1st.
Questions, anyone? We'll go on to the final information discussion item, which is renewal of the lease for the property used by the police department as a shooting range.
Good evening again. The Platteville Police Department, on behalf of the city, is, has entered into a lease in 1999 for some property that we utilize as a shooting range. That lease is not due to expire for quite some time yet, but we hold an option to renew this lease, and I would like to seek permission from you folks to renew that lease, so that it doesn't slip through the cracks down the road.
And there is a payment?
There would potentially be a, uh, increase in the, uh, annual payment from $1 a year, which we paid in advance for the current term, to potentially up to $101 per year, for a total of $2,525 for the additional 25-year term.
Any questions on that, anyone?
I, I'm confused. So the lease isn't due to expire until 2024?
Correct.
And we paid $25 for this lease, which doesn't expire until 2024?
Right.
And now we're looking at another 25-year lease, which would start in 2025 or now?
Down the road in 2025.
All right.
I just don't want to have it slip through the cracks.
All right, so it would start in 2025 and go for 25 years, so expiring on, in 2049 or whatever.
Correct.
And then, when you say a maximum potential cost of $101 per year, help me understand who set the cost?
That was...
It's set up in the lease agreement, and the increase allowed is no more than $100 So we are anticipating, um, that we will have to pay the maximum. Could be less.
Okay, I see. All right, and you want to pay that at this time for a lease that doesn't start until 2025?
We would have to contact the property owner and see what his intention is with regards to the, uh, renewal period, but that is the worst-case scenario. And I, as we did with the first term of the lease, at the direction of the, uh, finance director, pay it all in one lump sum over a lengthy period like that, so that, that does not slip into, or get overlooked.
And I see that this was not a budgeted item.
No, not at this time, but I, given the track record of, uh, correspondence with the property owner, I believe that it is something that will take a little time to sort out.
All right, at least now I understand, okay? So if it, if we approve it, and you want to pay it, and it's not in your budget, where are you going to get the money?
I will find the money somewhere in my current budget.
Any other comments or question? All right, that is it for...
I can move to adjourn.
We have a second. We'll vote?
No?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?